...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are you signing up for public comment?
No.
Are we sitting on the finances?
Let's go to the consent agenda and do...
That's what I'm saying. Anybody sitting on the financial side?
Last week, I looked 90 months today, I was talking to the budget meeting, it's about one thirty.
Is it moving up a little bit?
Yes, certainly, it is.
Someone make a motion to approve the consent agenda in minutes.
Motion by Mr. Adley Six, saying by Mr. Towel, the first to the end.
I oppose.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thank members of the board, members of the public. Again, my name is Cody Keys with Beckett, Miller, Lee and Keys, and we're here today as part of our court order progress monitoring and report to the public. So, we are about one year into a roughly two-year order of the federal court whereby we believe we're making strides in our efforts to continue to reach unitary status under the court order. The school district has been under a desegregation order since 1970, so we're hopeful to bring this to a close with the cooperation with the United States Department of Justice. So, what we're doing today is we are, we want to update the board and the public on our efforts at least in three particular areas: hiring, particularly for administration and certified employees, our classified employees, those that do not require a teacher license or not under the consent order that we're currently under. But we do want to talk about the hiring that we've done in way of certified employees to increase our minority staff. We want to talk about recruitment and retention team. Coach Morgan's here, he can give you a little bit more about what we're doing in order to increase recruitment and retention efforts, particularly with our colleges, historically black colleges and universities, those that have an education program, our efforts to partner with them. This is most of the information on here we've gone over before, but just for the sake of the public, we are a defendant in this lawsuit filed in 1970. It required all faculty to be fully integrated, and the desegregation efforts under the original order dates back to 1970. And, you know, it's had some ebbs and flows through the years where there was maybe robust efforts to reach unitary status, and then years where there was no activity. And I'd largely say that going into the 2017 school year, there had really been no activity to reach unitary status. And when I say unitary, I mean being considered by the courts to be a unified school system, not operating a dual school system, which we haven't operated a dual school system post-1970, but it's still those efforts to reach the satisfaction of the United States Department of Justice. So, in 2022, we attempted to obtain unitary status, which would require the federal court judge, the honorable Judge Brian Miller overseeing the case in Little Rock. It would require him to enter an order saying, hey, England School District, you're declared unitary, you no longer have any court oversight. There were objections and comments received from the community. Primarily, those objections were related to the hiring of minority teachers and administrators. So, that's where that gets us today. The school district and the United States, again, the Department of Justice agreed to a consent order, which is simply an order where both parties agree. This is what we're going to do to get us across the finish line. That order particularly spoke to the hiring and retention of certified employees and administrators. So, that's what we're looking at. The order is in effect until September 1st of 2026. So, we had our first presentation to the public about a year ago. We had another one in February of '26. We'll have another one in February, excuse me, February '25. We'll have another one in February of '26. And hopefully, our last report to the public will be September of '26, and then we'll go back to the court with our efforts. This is only applicable to the hiring of administrative positions of certified employees. The parties determined that, looking at our classified employees, the racial makeup was consistent with our student ratio. So, our hiring procedures, which we developed in consultation with the Department of Justice and Coach Morgan and his team are doing a good job of making sure that we remain trained. We're seeking to employ the best qualified personnel in all areas of operation. We remain an equal employment opportunity employer. We do not discriminate based on race, color, religion, national origin, sex, age or disability. So, we don't discriminate based on those characteristics, but in our hiring of certified administrative positions, we do consider race, but we're still going to pick the best qualified candidate, but we're tracking race. So, we have an open recruitment process for filling new positions and locating replacement personnel. All positions are advertised on the district website, our social media accounts, the AAEA, that's the Arkansas Association of Education Administrators. They have a job site that's very popular for people seeking jobs in education. We do at least one online employment vacancy website and two local sources of publicity such as churches, businesses and government offices. And we're tracking that, and we have, if you want the filings, it's all filings of record. Coach Morgan does a good job of when he posts the vacancy, he takes a picture of it, and then we make sure the court knows that we posted it at this public location. Race must be tracked at every level. We have a spreadsheet that's available. It's online, it's filed with the court. It tracks race at every, at every part of the process, including the application, the selection of the applicant to the interview, whether that applicant accepts the interview, offering of the position, and then if they actually accept the positions. It's tracked. Again, you're not required to hire based on race, but it's tracked, and it can be a consideration, but still ultimately want to hire the best candidate. Must make all hiring decisions consistent with Arkansas law and district policy, which is based on performance, effectiveness and qualifications. We use standard grading rubrics. That's really important because we can show when we've, when we've interviewed someone, they've all been based on the same rubric, so that we can ensure we're getting the best qualified person based on the rubric, and it's consistent across the board. So, there's no arbitrary hiring of someone, it has to be based on our rubric, and we've been really good about consistently applying that rubric to all of the positions. Then we must document how we determine each applicant's were offered interviews and which applicants were offered positions. Again, we're tracking all that, all filed with record and available for the public, and then we're keeping that, those procedures available. Then we have a district-wide diverse recruitment and retention team. Again, Coach Morgan can speak more to that. The at a minimum includes our superintendent, a high school principal or assistant, a high school instructional facilitator, a high school certified employee selected by the superintendent, elementary principal or AP, elementary school instructional facilitator, and the same certified employee at the, at the employee at the elementary level. The team was trained every summer. They were trained again this past summer over what's required in the order, so they can be familiar with it and ensure to implement that as part of our ongoing desegregation obligations. And then, a big piece of this is partnerships and recruitment partnerships, which Coach Morgan's going to talk to. These are the three that were listed in the order, and we've expanded that a little bit. And again, the, the consistent pattern being trying to find applicants that wouldn't typically or hadn't in the past applied for England School District. We want to go out and at least make them aware of what we have to offer in this community and hoping to encourage them to apply. So, I will go back at this point and turn it over in no particular order to Dr. Hubbell and Coach Morgan to give you a little bit more update on the current state of our hiring, the recruitment and retention team, and the update on partnerships.
I want to commend Coach Morgan on what a great job he's done with reaching out. And Coach, if you want to go ahead and do your part of the presentation, please.
Just wanted to give a quick update on the partnerships that we were able to develop. Like Cody alluded to, we added one, which was Shorter College. We agreed to a partnership with Shorter. We haven't signed a MOU yet. We've been kind of playing phone tag with them, but they have agreed to partner with us. I've been in contact with Ms. Kristen Bell, she is the director of recruitment there. And also, Arkansas Baptist is another one that we were able to line out. We're going to go to their career fair, they're going to come and join us at ours as well. Dr. Nelson, she is the VP of Academic Affairs, so she's been in constant contact with me trying to develop a really good partnership with them. And Philander Smith, we can't, we don't have any luck with Philander. And UAPB, Ms. Brittany kind of started some correspondence with them, but we just haven't been able to get anything lined out.
Can you also speak, Coach Morgan? Oh, I'm sorry, let me cut off the question. Go ahead.
No.
I was going to say, could you also speak to the recruitment and retention team and the alls efforts as far as ensuring compliance with the order and coverage?
So, I think we're signed up to the 10, the career fair, and UAPB is in October, I believe, this time, and she's a part of that team as well. One of the things that we did last year, we're going to schedule another, the retention piece, like, we wanted to make sure that we met with all of our new hires, especially the minority candidates, to see what we could do to make sure that they stay here once they get here. And we had a good lunch with them last year, and they, of course, offered some great ideas. And so, we're going to continue to attend those career fairs, and of course, we have our trainings with the lawyers every summer.
Thank you so much, Coach Morgan. I believe we made some really good hires this year. Out of 10 hires, we have hired five minorities. Coach Jackson is our new athletic director and head football coach, and he does math intervention, and I am so impressed with him. He is a fine person, and he's doing a fine job for us. Marie Kearney, before I came here, I was at UAM with their MAT program, and Marie was one of my students. So, I knew she was going to do a great job. And in my classroom walkthroughs, I have gone through her chemistry class, and she is in there teaching chemistry. She's teaching that hard stuff. And she's also an assistant volleyball coach and assistant girls' basketball coach. And I think that she has been a very strong hire. On Danielle Williams, our pre-K director, we have given her additional duties. And Charles Chatten, our assistant football coach, we have given him additional duties as well. We had one Hispanic hire, Cassandra Rubio, our high school sped teacher, and she has been wonderful to have. We've needed somebody who can do Spanish translation for us, and she's been a very strong hire. So, I am very pleased with that.
Thank you, Dr. Hubbell. So, board and community, what we do from here, I mean, we're really to the point where we're seeing the initial efforts of the order play. And so, we'll be able this year, after our second full year of having the recruitment and retention team, to put the efforts, we laid the groundwork, and now we can really put our efforts into the job fairs, increasing our participation with those schools. There's going to be barriers to coming to England, we talk about those a lot, and we know that there's always going to be barriers when we have schools that are, you know, paying potentially more or have just more options. But the recruitment and retention team, they're aware of those challenges, and that's why we're working with, like, having the lunch with the minority teachers to say, hey, what can we do to continue to increase our recruitment efforts amongst minority applicants? So, we'll continue to do that this year. I think the focus will really be going into the spring as we begin the hiring season. What, Dr. Hubbell, May, June, July? We'll have a whole year of increasing our visibility amongst the historically black colleges and universities, which we hope will increase our applicant pool. And then, we'll have the data through the rubrics to have really good interviews, and then going into next school year, be able to increase our minority hiring even more. That'll get us through to our September report and continue to have good things to report to you and the public, then go back to the court and say, hey, here's what we've done, and ask to be unitary and out of federal oversight. If there's any, anytime the public has anything they want to relay, you know, my contact information's available, Dr. Hubbell's is available, we can take that insight and continue to incorporate that into our efforts. I thank you again, Coach Morgan, for leading those efforts, and Dr. Hubbell. That's all I have, Mr. President.
I'd like to go into executive session to discuss personnel, please.
Most of our standing exam, taking note that you all present. Mr. President, I have a question for you to answer.
We're already, we're going to wait till we get out.
Well, your public comments typically follow you.
Well, your public comments signs up before the meeting, 15 minutes before the meeting. You didn't, sir, I saw what you signed up for.
I told Dr. Hubbell that follows, so I would be comfortable.
Sir, there's a form right here, so, I mean, you didn't sign the form 15 minutes before.
Let's check out that.
I understand, I'm just telling you, I know what the new law is. The law says you 15 minutes prior to the meeting, we leave a form out here, and you didn't sign the form.
And I called Dr. Hubbell and told her I would be speaking, sir.
What did you mean?
So, so you have your lawyer.
Well, I'll just say, I'm, let me speak to Ms. Hubbell. Is he asked to be on the form, or?
We talked, and you said you would be here. I don't remember you saying anything about speaking.
For public comments.
We're going to go to executive session, you wait till we get out.
I'll be with you. Okay.
693, Mr. Keys?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As we wrap up our report, the, the order does require us to answer questions from attendees about the update and information on our most recent status report. I know that the state law 902 says you need to sign in, and I think that was our anticipation that members of the public would sign in. But just to keep with the sphere of the law, okay, with the board, I'd say, let's go ahead and entertain any questions about the order and the update, and then be able to go on with your meeting, okay?
Yes, sir.
So, any members of the public that have any questions about the status of the DSA case? Dr. Nelson?
Yeah.
I want to make sure, I mentioned it to Mr. Keys when you guys went into executive session, because I'm sure you didn't have the order in front of you. But the order says a little bit more than that. It says, provide an opportunity for members of the public to share with the board relevant information about the order and the status report, too. Okay? I'll try to be as brief as possible, but while we appreciate...
Mr. Keys, I could use that.
Are we done with this? I'm not using any more.
Yeah. Again, my name is Dr. Nelson, and I represent the Guard Fellow Alumni Association alone. Some other members who are present here. And again, we appreciate the district's efforts to document their hiring procedures and recruitment activities as outlined in the consent order. However, we also reviewed the attachments submitted to the stat, to the status report. We have a few concerns regarding compliance, equity and community engagement. England's total student population, I guess, for your ten day count, was 613 kids. I don't know if that's changed or not. About 260 of those are black kids, including 38 who would be mixed race children who have at least one black parent. That represents 0.2% of the student population. That's a significant racial disparity between student demographics and certified staff, especially in teaching roles. Your, your hiring pipeline, you have had dozens of applicants of color who would not offer interviews or positions. Your rubric scores and your rationale documentation are inconsistently applied or missing for many of those candidates. We, the consent order clearly requires job postings and appropriate local sources of publicity, including churches and community organizations. Nowhere in your documentation that was provided in the status report is there evidence of outreach to black churches or black-led civic organizations in this England community. That's not just a missed opportunity, but that's a direct violation of this order. And despite the consent order explicit requirement, you know, you put, you put documentation at the post office, the public library, the fitness center, the district website, Facebook School Spring, Arkansas Job League, ASBA, but there's no evidence of any outreach to black churches in the England community, which is a specific part of paragraph seven, to local, black-led civic organizations, fraternities, sororities, alumni groups, which will be us, Guard Trail. And this omission violates paragraph seven of the consent order, and that concerns us greatly. Also, you have disparate hiring outcomes despite diverse applicant pools. The district received applications for qualified black candidates for certified administrative roles, and many were passed over without clear rationale. Rubric scores were inconsistently applied, interview documentation was vague or missing, and it went so far as the board advocating their responsibility, even in superintendent hiring. Twenty-two people applied for the superintendent's job, six black candidates applied, not a black candidate received an interview. The process was delegated to internal superintendent Barry Scott Senior, who employed, I guess, an opaque and exclusionary approach without any oversight from this school. I don't know if he just brought you candidates and you dealt with whoever he brought. And Mr. Scott was the superintendent who, in the records provided to the court, had this documented history of not interviewing or hiring black candidates for certified teaching positions. That's going to be problematic with the court. And we're going to, to bring this information to the attention of Mr. Eichner at the Justice Department, and Judge Miller as well. Some of the superintendent candidates without, received interviews without any clear rubric scores. They had email exchanges, which the former acting superintendent, while other minority candidates received none of those discrepancies, none of those opportunities. That is problematic. There are compliance gaps throughout this report. The community engagement has to be more than procedural. Mr. Keys can tell you the meaning of procedural compliance. The recruitment and retention team, with all due respect to Mr. Morgan, despite outreach, hiring outcomes remain racially skewed. The only documented team meeting that you had with your recruitment team all year long happened on July the 31st. An only meeting all year. That meeting involved multiple team members and legal counsel. There's no evidence of monthly, quarterly or recurring meetings. Despite the consent order ex, it is explicit, there's an expectation of an effective team maintaining ongoing efforts. The superintendent, the high school principal, the instructional facilitators, you have certified staff, the technology coordinator and the legal counsel all attended this July 31st meeting. The lack of regular meeting is noted. One meeting in seven months is insufficient to demonstrate effective team operation. No minutes, no agenda, no follow-up actions from that meeting. It's a fragmented effort at best, and you've missed a real community opportunity. There's no documented engagement with black churches and local civics groups or cultural organizations. This undermines the consent order mandating inclusive publicity. It's just non-compliance throughout. I have real issues with these partnerships, how they are set up. You don't have a signed partnership to this date. And if you have one with Shorter, Shorter is a junior college, they don't even have a teacher education program. You are missing the real opportunities. The consent order with faculty and staff was filed February the 23rd, 2024, 18 months later. It required you to develop recruiting partnerships with the University of Arkansas Pine Bluff, Philander Smith, Arkansas Baptist, that you demonstrate public engagement and that you document efforts to diversify recruitment and retention. An unsigned MOU with Arkansas Baptist dated August the 28th, 2025 is included in that filing. That date is significant because it was presented one day before the attorneys filed this court requirement status report on August the 29th. And you did that because September 1st was Labor Day, and several courts were closed. It is just mind-boggling to sit here and listen to you and not know. This board has to be aware of all of these things that are happening. And while I respect the fact that the board made a choice for superintendent, that's Dr. Hubbell, and that you run your school district the way you see fit and it works with, for the needs of this specific community, you still must follow this consent order. The consent order mandates that you develop these partnerships. And an unsigned MOU is not sufficient. I don't know, Mr. Morgan, I'm aware that he coaches here at the school, and that the kids had excellent basketball season, and I commend you on that. And from all accounts that I hear, you're an outstanding fellow. You know, and this, this, my comments are not meant to knock on you or Dr. Hubbell, but fidelity and transparency are super important. Mr. Morgan, as a high school principal, lacks the authority to sign a contractual agreement with the colleges and universities on behalf of the school district. And then that same document will be submitted to several court. Superintendent and board of directors do that. Philander Smith, I reached out to Philander Smith a couple of weeks ago, and I mentioned to Dr. Hubbell in a phone conversation that I had. She indicated Mr. Morgan had reached out to them as well. You have no signed MOU with them. I have asked them to reach out to Dr. Hubbell exclusive of the Guard Trail Alumni Association so that she and your building administrators can develop a plan that works for England and Philander Smith. But Mr. Morgan lacks the authority to execute that contract, that agreement. UAPB, Patrice Carter, her letter's included in your packet. I don't know if you have the packet in front of you or not, from this recent status report. It's on page 140, 141. If you have it and you want to look at it, please feel free to. It references an agreement with former superintendent, Mr. Price, and Teach Pride program. Teach Pride is, it's, it is not a program that would allow you, afford you an actual partnership with UAPB. Teach Pride aligns with developing this on the campus of UAPB. It's a two-day internal training for UAP students and candidates before they get placed into an internship. It includes some outside partners, but it doesn't name the England School District as a... It includes some outside partners, but it doesn't name the England School District as a partner. And it's not a pipeline program that you actually need in this district to bring students to, forward UAPB students to this district. It's just a, it's just a paper that met its deadlines. And that does not satisfy the spirit or the letter of this. That is a procedural piece, and it does not work. It provides a written artifact that you can be, that you can show to the court, the DOJ, that says, I have, I, we have this agreement in place. It sets the stage for future collaboration. Now, that fulfills the order's requirement for ongoing collaboration and documentation, but it's not a program that works for this district. Teach Pride is for those students who are currently enrolled there at UAPB. It's a compliance tool that, that letter you have from UAPB, that's all it is. And whether you got that from the attorney perspective, Mr. Keys, I know he's sharing that with you, that you have to have these documents. The missing pieces, you need formal agreements with these schools, and you need them to satisfy the court and for us to be satisfied with the process of what you're trying to accomplish. And finally, I want to share a sheet with you. Is that sheet like they're doing it with the yellow sticker on it? Now, it had a yellow sticker on it, it had a yellow tab on it. Just give me one second. I'll wrap this up. Has a yellow tab on it. It's all right. If you can't find it, that's it. We'll give you this sheet paper you passed around the table. It would behoove you to be aware of this. And it doesn't happen often, but Mr. Keys is aware because he's been a school person for a long time. That the court will call in school board members too, from time to time and ask them questions. So I'm saying this about Mr. Morgan. Mr. Morgan is often referred to as the high school principal here. But you must report your administrators and your employees to the school information system in Arkansas, it's called the statewide information system, SIS. And I'm sending this around to you so you can see it. You don't list Mr. Morgan as your high school principal in your SIS. In your SIS, the elementary principal has Tammy Bennett, and the high school principal has Brittany Robinson. Yet this district continues to represent Mr. Morgan and document as the high school principal for local and for state recording documents. He does not own a state recording document. Now, in that submitted data, there's always a risk to accreditation and funding. Inaccurate or incomplete reporting can jeopardize a school's accreditation status and affect its eligibility for state and federal funding ties to staff. Either he is, or he is not the high school principal. And if he is the high school principal, we'll be looking at the state information system for the district to make that correction. We want to partner with you. I have expressed that to Mr. Price, I've expressed that to Dr. Hubble. But there must be transparency, and there must be truth. And Mr. Keys, we will be following our concerns from the strike there at the Department of Justice and with Judge Miller.
Any other comments with the public? Just spread it out.
Elementary current enrollment is at 331. I've listed class sizes for you. I think they're very reasonable class sizes, especially compared to other bigger districts. If you look at fourth grade, we do have a really small class size in fourth grade. We had several students who left, and I did not move students around because I didn't want to change their homeroom teacher. So you'll see one class that has an extremely small class. Sorry, I think I'm missing your packet. On the 30th, we have fall pictures. The 9th through the 19th are book fair. The 11th, we have parent-teacher conferences, which were very well-attended. On the 16th, this morning, Energy out of Stuttgart came and opened doors and brought their big bucket trucks for the kids to see. The 19th, we have the Red Cross Safety Program doing a presentation for first through fourth grade, and that just teaches kids like what to do if there were a fire, how to have a safe place to go, how to get out of the windows. And then on the 30th, we start our chocolate fundraiser at elementary school. Any questions for that elementary school? Thank you.
Now, Coach Morgan. High school report from one of the building principals. Certified, may I add. On Wednesday, August the 20th, Michelle Blassing gave in with our seniors enrolling in current credit courses with PCC UA. On August the 26th, we had Life Touch on campus for fall pictures. And they also came back on September the 12th, and we had them take pictures with our seniors in their camping gowns. Athletic update, tennis is playing tonight. That's why Ms. Brittney is not here, she's watching her son play. They'll also be in Stuttgart on Thursday. Junior High Football will be hosting Miriam Thursday. Senior High has a bye this week. And volleyball is hosting Magna Code tonight, and will travel to Conway St. Joe on Thursday.
Thank you, Coach Morgan. And I do appreciate the leadership you've taken in getting those partnerships. I know you've worked very hard on that, and I want the board to know that.
Thank you.
And I imagine your name was not on that thing because they only had one slot.
You could only list one.
And we'll list you this time because, you know, you're, you're good.
You're good.
And I don't know, you didn't hear Ms. Lyndon, but she said you're a good man, and I think you are too. Okay, in your packets, I put the math meeting minutes, just to give you an idea of our curriculum meetings that, that we have. It's just something kind of for your information, for you to look at. The same thing about chronic absenteeism, I thought that was just an interesting article, and it makes me feel a little bit better that we're not the only people in the world who have chronic absenteeism. I talk to superintendents at meetings, and it is just epidemic. You would think in a four-day school, they could come to work, but not so. But anyway, that was just, you know, for you. Now, we picked up some grant money. We've gotten $1,400 plus new mannequins for CPR training. We are applying for an East Update Grant. You know, our East program is very important here at the school, and Coach Dennis does a very good job with them. We got a, or Micah got a Fresh Fruits and Vegetables grant that was right around $20,000. And when Angie and I meet with the state every month on our finances, we tell them this, and they're always very happy when we get even a small grant, and so we're happy with that. No, no grant is too small. I have in the very back of your packet, the letter we got from AAA. No, maybe it's not, that's something else from AAA. But anyway, they've issued us and Drew Central a letter of warning about the fight that took place at Drew Central. I noticed in the news that Barton and their opponent had kind of the same situation, and they called their game in the third quarter. Nobody is sicker about this than Coach Jackson. He really took that to heart, and he's worked really hard talking to those boys and getting them ready for the conference opener. We have a bye this Friday, and then we open our conference at Poehn. And he and the other coaches are working really hard with drilling it into their heads that they've got to play a clean game. You know, it, it's hard sometimes to do that when you're an adult, but when you're a kid, it's even harder. And they are just kids. They're not finished products, but we're working on them. Fourteen of our players were suspended because of the fight. Four of Drew Central's were suspended. Therefore, we had to forfeit to Mayflower this past week. But the good news in that is, we had two weeks to get ready for our conference opener. Mayflower was non-conference, and therefore, you know, really kind of a meaningless game. But we're trying to get that back on track. We played Bearden here, the juniors, Thursday night, and hope we have a good turnout for last.
Do you have a question on this?
Yes, sir.
So I know you said Coach Jackson's doing these things, talking to these kids, and, you know, I know we had fourteen, and I got to go watch them in the film and look at it a little bit. I saw some of them, they've got suspended, where people are pulling people off, but it is what it is, they're part of the qualification. And I commend you on what you did, and the coaches and stuff that they did as well, getting kids out of there and safety being first.
But some parents are really set up.
Right, some parents too.
Yeah.
I wasn't there, so I didn't get to see it or anything. But, you know, we have something like this happen, but what I wonder is, are we taking the time and opportunity to also use our counselor to check in on these kids that have gone through this, things like that? Maybe there's some underlying issues, maybe something like that might have happened. And it does affect you.
Yes.
Athletically, athletically, and academically. But are we doing anything to have our counselor checking on these kids?
That's probably a good idea. That is probably a very good idea. So, we're going to try to get that back on the track. I think volleyball is going great guns. I think those girls are good. Now, if you all will check your emails, your school email, I sent you the information on the annual ASBA conference in Little Rock in December. So if you'll just check your, your school email, I have that information in there for Yes, yes, sometime October, I have to look my calendar.
October 6th, November 3rd.
All right, this is the board meeting where we approve the annual budget. Angie, that's your cue.
It's in your packet. It's near the end. It says annual financial report, level one and level two. It's really just kind of the same old thing. If we stay within budget, don't have any major expenditures, I'm looking for us to end at like about $400,000 to $500,000 more than what we did this current past year. I did go ahead and budget a transfer from operating funds to the net legal balance. I just went ahead and scheduled that, so that'll be in there because I'm very optimistic that we'll be able to make that transfer. If we're not able to, we don't have to, but I have it budgeted in, and things still look good to me.
And as we have attrition, we're going to close the gap unless it's just something that we have to have. It can be absorbed, we're going to absorb it. And the last financial meeting we had with the state, they indicated to us that they thought we were doing a good job of that.
They, they did look at our budget this past week when we met with them, and they were impressed with it, and it looked really good.
Do you want to make a motion to approve the 15-year 2026 budget approval? Mr. Joey Adams, motion safe. Mr. Bobby Jones, all the first eye. Foe, seven oh.
All right, we need to buy some new computers for the high school business classroom layout at the cost of $23,901.25.
And we're going to be reimbursed.
Yes. I'm gonna let Eric tell you about this.
Mr. Robert Reedy, who's the CTE coordinator at the Co-op, he is applying for Perkins grant funding on our behalf, and so it won't cost us any money out of pocket. And the reason we're coming to you to get this approved is because we're going to do a reimbursement situation, because we are tax exempt on these devices if we purchase them. However, if a Co-op were to purchase them, they are not tax exempt. So we would, if we buy these and they reimburse us, it doesn't cost us anything out of pocket, but someone else can benefit from about $2,500 of Perkins money. So we just thought that that would be a good pay thing, if we're getting a whole lab for free if we do that and allow them to have those funds to give to someone else or something.
And we'll take that kind of deal any day.
And this should be approved tomorrow at their board meeting at the Co-op.
Make a motion. Motion by Mr. Trish Carter, there's any second?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Bobby Jones, here he is. All the first eye?
Aye.
Foe, seven oh.
Okay, on slide. This MOU with the Co-op keeps coming up. Mr. Barry Scott, when he was the interim, he had said no, he did not want to participate in that. And I respected that. However, it's come to my attention that we're not going to get GT services unless we sign that MOU. And we have new GT people who really need that scaffolding. So I think this MOU is about $2300. I put it in the bag. I would like for you all to please reconsider that because, I, I think it's $2300.
How much is the next last page?
Oh, yeah. But it doesn't have an amount on it. I'm pretty sure it's about $2300. Yeah, $2300.
Are you recommending it?
Our GT people are floundering. We do need that. Yes, I am recommending it.
Make a motion to approve the Vance Line and Specials MOU with Wilbur Mills, Walker. Roll through by Mr. Adams, he say? Say by Chris Carter, there's all the first app.
And I'll be at their board meeting in the morning, and I'll take care of it over there. Now, at leadership meeting, we've kind of kicked around the idea of maybe trying to change Co-op, because BB is so far away. Pine Bluff Co-op would be a lot closer. And I know that people think Pine Bluff is unsafe and that kind of thing, but I worked at that Co-op two years, and it was a good place to work. I never felt, yeah, I, I never felt unsafe. Of course, I wasn't on a bad street at two in the morning either. But Brittany Robinson did point out, though, that a lot of our people commute in from the north, so I don't know, it might be. But would you all be opposed to my just sort of looking into that, maybe calling the Pine Bluff Co-op and seeing if they might offer us more stuff than, than Wilbur Mills does?
What school districts are in about a Co-op?
Sheridan, Whitehall, Watson Chapel, Pine Bluff, and, no, Woodlines, it's CR. I'll find out. That's most of it. Well, we wouldn't do it until next year. Yeah, we're locked into this for this year. Well, that, that's one of the first things I would do would be to have a strong call.
We're in Pine Bluff, BB, Coria, Augusta.
Cersei, yeah, Cabot. Yeah, and it's a long way from here, too. It, it's a little bit better than an hour's drive, and it's over a bad road.
Everything's a long way from there.
Yeah.
We want to take action there.
No, no, I just wanted to... No, no, I just wanted to know that you all would be opposed to my looking into that. All right, now, in my opinion, we don't have enough electives at the high school. I don't want kids in study halls. They need to be in a class, whether they want to be in it or not. A kid's going to tell you, "No, I want to be in study hall," but they don't know what's good for them. So we have an opportunity to put in two more electives. The AAA does a student officiating class where our students can actually become athletic officials. And I think we might have some interest in that. I think that would, I think it'd be a one semester class, but I would like your permission to pursue getting that. And also, we want to start an introduction to teaching class. I had good success with this at Fordice. Like England, it was difficult to recruit people to Fordice. There's no place to live, there's nothing to do, there's nowhere to eat. So we started an intro to teaching program, and much of it, one of the good things about it is that any certified teacher can teach it. You don't have to have a specific certification. You do it kind of like an internship. You would have the kids out helping in classrooms, doing things like that. And I had three or four kids over there that I knew were going to spend their life in Fordice for whatever reason. And I told them, "When you get through college, you come back to me, and we'll get you a job." I got me a sped teacher that way. I got me a math teacher that way, and I got me a baseball coach that way. So it does give kids some idea of the teaching profession. In the third class, we would like to revive driver's ed because, you know, as a parent, you get a discount if your child has gone through driver's ed. But they need to be doing stuff like this instead of just laying up in study halls and getting in trouble, all that.
We should utilize our current car we have, or?
Well, I noticed Snickers out there when I said that. I don't know anything about that car.
I think it's still a good ship.
Okay, yeah.
I like driver's ed.
What? It's a good class, and it just distresses me that study, you know, study hall is just not the way to go.
I can teach you, but she already hit that brake on her freshman side of her when she was in that. You got, she might have a break over on that side of the table?
Yeah, I'd like to have a motion for us to incorporate the officiating class and the intro to teaching. Of course, we probably, we don't have to do driver's ed. Those would be two new classes.
Motion by Mr. Tiny, second. Take my Mr. Chris Carter Lewis, all the favors the eye. Close, seven oh.
And we have a few personnel matters here. Kelsey Boyd is our GT director, and we need to add 10 days to her contract.
Show me a motion by Mr. Bobby Jones, any second. Second by Mr. Dylan Tyles, all the favors the eye. Close, seven oh.
Okay, on the next sheet, we need to hire Latasha Binham for food service.
Make a motion. Mr. Tyler, any second. Clear by Mr. Joey Adams, all the favors the eye. Close, seven oh.
On the next one with Angie Seer, Belinda Livingston took her retirement one day last week. She sent me an email that said she was retiring effective that day. So what I want to do is to absorb that position because she was a high-dollar teacher. I would like to take Mindy and have her split her time between the elementary and the high school. We're going to take what federal programs she was over and give them to Angie, and Angie's going to have all the federal programs. Nobody, it was Belinda, Mindy, and it was scattered out. It didn't make sense to me. But I want all that into this office, and Mindy won't have any federal program responsibilities as she can concentrate on instructional facilitation. And I would like to have Angie's salary increased by $20,000 a year because this is a great increase on her workload.
Make a motion. Motion by Mr. Adams, any second. Take my Bobby Jones, all the favors the eye. Close, seven oh.
And we have one resignation, Teresa Murray from food service.
I will.
Mr. Chris Carter Lewis, any second. I'll say the second, take my Mr. Adams, all the favors the eye. Close, seven oh.
I will.
Mr. Ty, second by Mr. Chris Carter Lewis, all the favors the eye. Close.